I'm Lori, I think we're ready to go. Start a meeting if we would?
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, December 1st, 2021 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Wazinski, Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw,
Here.
Naruski, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Keys, can you give me a shout out just so we can?
Mr. Keys is here.
Okay. If you're, I need, just need to have some kind of indication, maybe is he gonna raise his hands or something when he wants to talk?
Can you hear me? Mr. Keys is here.
Councilman Key, let's try that again, please.
Mr. Keys is here.
Stand for a moment as silent meditation is pressed.
We don't have Mr. Keys here for prayer, so Mr. Witherspoon, would you like to say a word? Amen. And the pledge?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of the minutes of the 11/17/2021 city council meeting and bills for payment on 12/3 and 12/10. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Naruski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Wazinski. Anybody here for a repository sale? Anyone here to speak on a repository, anyone to speak on a repository? This will take us to public comments. Okay?
Good morning.
Hi.
I'm Sheila Ellen Woger, I reside at 2011 Fairmount Parkway here in the city of Erie, 16510. I first like to give honor to God because he is the source of my being. The word of God tells us in Isaiah 58 and 1, "Cry aloud, spare not; lift up thy voice like a trumpet, and show my people their transgression, and the house of Jacob their sins." I'm gonna ask council today if I could-
Make sure you talk into that mic, okay?
I'm gonna ask council today if I could have permission to go back in the context of time and use the N-word? Would everyone, is everyone okay with that? You know, we're talking about history, we're talking about CRT, all this stuff, you know, and there was a time when I, as a woman of color, was called a nigger. And it was acceptable, so can I just use that in context of time? I mean, recently, not from Erie, some, y'all say, well, where's she come from? You know, I'm from Muskogee, Oklahoma, I've been here 25 years. And my experience here in Erie, Pennsylvania, has been like living on what I would probably imagine would have been a plantation. We have individuals, the African-American community that had, that has positioned themselves as our leaders. And they are far from being our leaders, they are in fact our bleeders. People don't like talking to me because growing up in Muskogee, Oklahoma, in a household where it was, there was abuse in the house. My mother called me names and said I would never amount to anything, but she sent me to church every Sunday morning. And it was in church that I found out about a man named Jesus. And the verse said, "Jesus loves me, thus I know," so if there's somebody that loves me, I have spent the rest of my life trying to find out who this Jesus is and, and to live according to his standards and not men's. When I moved to Erie 25 years ago, I came here, my ex-husband had been released from prison, our oldest son was 13 years old. And I thought that by having him in, in his life, he would change, but he turned out to be the abusive person that he was. But I took him to court for non-support, he was ordered to pay, and I said, "As long as he's paying, I'm staying." And then the first snow we had, it was in 19, I think it was 98, 96, I think when I moved here, we had a big snow, I had never seen that much snow in my life, and I said, "That sealed it for me." So I've been here since that time, so I've been here 25 years, and I call it a plantation because that is what it has been like to me. I've experienced more discrimination from people that look like me rather than those that don't look like me. So I'm, you can't say that I'm racist because my second husband, Peter Woger, who lives in California now, I don't know why, I didn't mean to go into all this personal stuff, but he's a white man. The only thing a black man has done for me is, was called me a bitch or whore, tried to use me to his advantage. And so I'm gonna expose some people here in Erie, Pennsylvania. And because I have been in church all my life, I've not been perfect, I, I could share some stories with you that I'm not proud of. So I'm not here as a person that the church has accused me of as being holier than thou because I speak truth. It was Dr. Kozak at Ghana University where I got one of my degrees, and he said, "Never be afraid to speak truth to power." I was the only black person in the class, I said, "Well, he must be talking to me," but see, he don't know me. See, I've been speaking truth to power since my grandmother taught me how to say, "Now I lay me down to sleep." That's the power I know, you know, I don't know color, the first time I was called a nigger when I was a little girl. I grew up in a segregated public school, and when, uh, was going to visit my grandmother, and they, and I looked and I saw this man had his hand on the steering wheel, had his head up so proud that he was teaching his children how to hate. And my parents didn't see anything. So when I got to Big Mama's house, and we called her Big Mama, I said, "Big Mama," I said, "Those white children called us nigger." And she said, she took me by the hand, and she said, "Sheila, forgive them because they know not what they do." She instilled in me love for people, I don't, I wouldn't know a Jew from an Italian, you know, I wouldn't talk that, I was talking that we were all children of God. And that's how I treat people as human. I never felt that I was, after I, after I came to the knowledge of Christ, because as a child, people would tell me, "Why are you walking with your head hung down, Sheila?" I didn't know I was walking with my head hung down, well, I guess if you were called bitches and whores, I'm gonna tell you, you'd never amount to nothing, I guess you would have your head down too. But then when I came to the knowledge of Christ and found out what he said I was, and believe what he said that I could be, that's what I believe. So when I walk with my head up high today, it's not because I'm proud, it's because I know whose I am. I am somebody, ain't got nothing to do with black. My second husband was a white man, he had the prettiest blue eyes you could ever look into, but whenever we would go out, he had to be the nigger lover. We didn't see each other like that, it's the evilness of men's hearts that we are dealing with today. We have people in this city right now with no water. And we have billions of dollars in surplus. And people right in this city today with no water. And you're talking about millions for more policing, ta, take care, you can't even take care of the simple things. This is not the government that God said that we would have according to the prophet Isaiah that would rest on his shoulders. There should be nobody wanted for anything. And it's not about black, about white, nor it's about the evilness of people's hearts. Bishop Brock, let me tell you about Bishop Brock.
I think we better, I think your time is up, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I'll be back.
Okay, please.
But our leaders, they are not our leaders, and I'm here to tell you. And forgive me, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but I have a lot to say. Black people, the black people in this community are our worst enemy, and it was Dr. Garvey that said in Bishop Brock's church, the first time I met him, I'm gonna sit down. He said, with his arthritic fingers, as I'm pointing at you, with my arthritic finger, he said, "You people are your own worst enemy, Mel Witherspoon, you people are your own worst enemy."
Anybody else to speak?
Good morning, council, my name is Ron Stempka, I live at 3925 Marion Street. And, uh, this water, million dollar, didn't this new, new thing that the so-called president passed, doesn't that take care of the sewer lines? They infrastructure? I'm asking.
I guess we don't know that yet.
Well, now you're, now you're having votes today, four votes, pass it, wait, let's find out first before you guys vote on this stuff. And then you owe me apology, you over there, you owe me apology, Alan.
My name is Liz, first name is Liz.
Okay, Liz, you owe me apology, last time I was here. You had the police officer take me out.
Excuse me, we're not supposed to be talking to
Individual members.
Individual council people.
Which, you should come up to the phone here, you can't talk to nobody.
You are supposed to talk to us in general as a council at a whole.
Okay, yeah, I was disgraced last time. I have my rights, I'm a patriot, I did a lot. Took me 51 years to get my ID card from the vets. It was hidden, everything, okay? I worked at Zer for 42 years, okay? In this city is being, how many jobs, I don't wanna know how many, can somebody ask me, I'm asking a question, how many jobs did we get in the city of Erie? Can anybody tell me that? The name, I'm just poking at all you people up there, as you said, I have, to everybody. Anybody have an answer, how many jobs we got in the city of Erie? You can't, you guys don't even know.
You can have my Erie forward.
What's that for?
We were just presented in caucus by being heard out from the chamber, and it has a lot of information, you can have that.
Okay. Like I said, Erie went out, back in the 60s, Erie was a booming town. Now, it's so dead, you can't even get jobs, these young kids, they, they gotta learn a trade, right? Where they gonna go get their jobs at? The only place is Erie County Tech, that's the only one they can go to. State council, get some work into this town, how many people try to get jobs in this town? 30 years ago, I tried to buy the Comer Downs, okay? I had people from Houston, all millionaires, we wanted to buy the Comer Down. Bob Plains says, "No, I'm tearing it down, make an industrial park, go take a look at it now." It's nothing but a field of haze. Like I said, I, I don't, I had the money to buy, I had millions of dollars, I had, it was Houston, I had five millionaires wanna invest in that, Bob Plains said, "No." People don't wanna do nothing in Erie. Just try and get somebody to go get jobs in Erie. We need some, is anybody looking for a job? I'm asking you over there, with your face all covered up. Anybody getting any jobs, anybody that's taking care of that job, hiring, looking for jobs in Erie?
We need to be clear on a couple things, the purpose of public comment is for public to comment, it's not for debate, it's not for question and answer. I serve as a solicitor, you're asking me questions that have nothing to do with my role. That being said, if you wish to discuss jobs with me, I'm happy to talk with you after the meeting, but the role today is for public comment.
I'm making po, comments right now, public comments, okay? And like I said, the council votes on that bill, they gotta wait till that, where they get to see when all that money's coming into Erie. What do you get, 65 million from the government? That's, he's got to spend. And they're spending on stupid stuff. And then he made a comment, if you get social security, you got a big raise, that'll cover the, all the taxes, that's bull. The people in Erie, like me, I'm 73 years old now, I pay my taxes all the time. And I'll tell you what, the poor people ain't got enough money to pay all these add-on taxes, it's a bunch of bull. People in Erie better wake up. This mayor doesn't, so-called mayor, as I heard through the grapevine, he's not the mayor, you got two women running the city, that's what I heard, okay? So, I'll leave it at that, and like I said, someone owes me apology.
Any more citizens to be heard?
Good morning, council, Ed Kissel, 2815 Sigsbee, just to continue to let council know that the city hasn't been lax in looking at stormwater. Back a number of years ago, there was a litter boom put in on 12th and Green Garden, down in the gully down there that you can't see, that's trapped a lot of debris. There's also another litter boom put in behind the waste treatment plant on the Mill Creek Tube that's doing the same thing. These are all ways that the city has looked at on trying to keep our bay clean. The, the next one coming up, the city, I believe, just got a grant for over $300,000 to solve one of the major pollution problems. Is the garrison run, which is the one that had the cave-in at Frontier Lumber. So there's been a, a lot done to try to curtail and keep our bay clean. Plus, the city has regulations and not a zone, zoning, that back when the Bayfront Parkway started, we were able to get in devices that are put in the catch basins along base, the basic ones was at Frontier Park at the country fair, they put in underground three, about 250-foot-long pipes, three foot in diameter along West State Street. They catch their stormwater that comes in off their large concrete base. In the catch basins, and not all of them, you'll see a white device, looks like a moon, and the purpose of that was to trap the sediment, oils and greases, and allow the clean water to run into Cascade Creek. We also have those, we were able to get in through council down along the bayfront at the convention center, and at different properties at the Sheridan whereby the same thing happens on our waterfront. I know there was some discussion, some of the authorities might be complaining about their large areas, that they discharge their water directly into the bay because they're so close. That doesn't solve the pollution problem because there's oils and greases that come off of those parking lots that these devices help mitigate by having the oils and greases evaporate and trapping the sediment, so there are good reasons why these things have been put in, and the city has been instrumental in doing that. So again, I encourage you to look at the stormwater bases as a ways and means to keep our water in our community clean and active along our bayfront, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Really, come on up.
Good morning, my name's John Whaley, I live at 447 Gordon Lane in Erie. A number of things I wanna talk about, first, the agenda's printed and published. Nowhere does it say prayer. Supreme Court says you are allowed to pray before a meeting. Have the guts to put prayer on here then, but it says silent meditation. Your religion is not my religion, your desires are not mine, so if you wanna silently pray, I think you're allowed to, and you should, and that's what you're saying you're gonna do. I think it's the wrong way to start a meeting. Uh, books. I've got a library of books at home I've read, this one's really interesting, it talks about dozens of cities acting like startup businesses. Startup businesses, young and fresh, and starts with a clean sheet of paper to look at how to do things. And I'm wondering, this is not a question for anybody, but do you guys have a library? Do you buy books, do you subscribe to the Wall Street Journal, do you read things so we can benchmark and learn from other places? Example in here about potholes and how one city changed the way they do potholes. The way they described the previous way of doing potholes is exactly the way we do it here. And it'd be interesting to see if, in this budget that you're approving, is anything changing? I was involved in budgets in 2005 and 2006, six and seven. You're doing the same exact thing, the same exact way, with the same exact people, nothing's changing, nothing's transformational. Nothing in the next year's budget is going to, from what I can see, change processes, change people. Police, looks like we're gonna maybe have some social work aspect, I love it. I don't know if we need to go back to 2004 and do all the things we did then, the city's a little different, policing has changed. But if you always do what you've always done, you'll always have what you have right now, we've got a declining population, we've got a decaying tax base, we've got growing blight. And you sat here last night, and you listened to the police say that even though we're hiring more police, overtime's gonna go up, more police in the streets not gonna do anything. One person asked what I thought was a serious question, it was very, it was perfect. The rest of the people just, you listened, you agreed, you nodded, there was a lot of log rolling. Police chief said, "You guys are doing a great job," you said to the police chief, "You're doing a great job." Here's $14 million to go do something with, I don't know if he really laid out exactly how the money's gonna be spent, how it's gonna make the city better. He intimated that with more police and a juvenile person, maybe the 14-year-old wouldn't have stolen the car and crashed into the house. Well, that, that's hogwash, that's, that's malarkey. You wanna keep a 14-year-old from stealing a car? Have better schools, have jobs for their parents, have a clean city that they're proud to live in, they don't live in crap. You've rolled up, Kathy Rosdick now is in charge of everything, nothing's gotten better, there's not less blight. There's not, there's two code enforcement cars parked on the other side of the street, why are they in this building? They're not here to sit in their offices, they're go look at blight, write tickets, quality of life tickets that you raced through four years ago. You're not doing anything with it, you've got the tools, you've got the bag of tools, you're not using them. Kudos to President Wazinski for actually saying, "We don't want more fees." Mayor, go back and give us a better budget, not talking to you specifically, I'm saying kudos. Purchase orders kill me, the change order for the Coquah Street Bridge that we raced through, we had to fix it, Coq was the best, I love Frontier, the mayor, 6% change order. Whose fault is that? 6%, that's a big difference. Garrison Run Culver, 89% increase. How did it go from 207 to $400,000? Does the engineering not know what they're doing? What's going on? You're throwing away, adding $186,000 like it's candy, like it's play money. ARP, you got something where you're gonna give $2 million to somebody to build five-unit buildings? Isn't LERTA enough? LERTA was gonna save the city, LERTA increased, LERTA, LERTA, now $2 million in taxpayer money you're gonna give to somebody to build apartment buildings. I find that offensive. How much of this ARP money's already spent, when I look at that 2 million?
Finish your thought, sir.
So, how much is already spent, how much have you promised to people out of that 2 million? And every line item, is it already gone, is it promised to somebody? But yes, thank you for all that you do, I wish you did more stuff than I like.
John, could you just, what's the name of that book, I couldn't see it.
Oh, Startup City, and you're welcome tomorrow, anytime you want, it's ours.
Okay. Well, I could give it to Lori or something. Did you say it's a library book, so?
It's in my library.
Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard?
Can you hear me?
Barely.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, um, so I believe the stormwater is still on the agenda. Some, some, one of you council members previously said, "Well, why should we pay when the water's coming to us from Mill Creek?" You know, even, even if that were totally the only consideration, Mill, the water coming from Mill Creek is entering onto a highly-developed watershed. There's not, there's a lot of pavement here, this is not an untouched watershed, so we're still all part of the problem. Um, there's already a significant amount of the ARP money that's going to address stormwater problems. And it's really time to pass the stormwater fee. Failure to pass the fee allows the, the, the large, larger nonprofits, of which there are too many in this city, the churches, the commercial, the huge residential properties, as well as the small ones, to continue to not contribute. So if you are concerned about the low-income people, maybe there's a way to provide some kind of program to help subsidize or forgive them, but we shouldn't exempt all the other properties from a fee in, in the course of doing that. Our residential participation is also essential, and there should be incentives for people to, to adopt practices that reduce stormwater. Um, same with the sewer and refuse fees, if you're really concerned about low-income people, then set up some kind of mechanism to provide some kind of relief based on income. I'm concerned that the funds for police do not include more funding for social service personnel to be involved with incidents needing that intervention rather than just police. Once you got a guy out there with a gun, you've changed the chemistry of what's gonna happen. Just hearing, hearing the tone of the videos that were during the study session, it's just, it's just this frenzied tone once you get this guy out there with a gun, and it does escalate things. Perhaps in order to help increase the diversity of the police department, some of the ARP funding should go into helping people to pay the cost of attending the police academy. You know, that's something, other jurisdictions have set up a way to pre-qualify people before they have to go through the academy, so they know whether they'll be hired or not, or whether they're likely to be hired or not. As you know, I'm concerned about the accessibility of our facilities and sidewalks to all people in this town. I visited the EDDC food hall briefly, it's a maze of hallways. There's one group of tables that might be accessible to people who use wheelchairs, but the, people who use wheelchairs shouldn't be segregated to just one area of the facility. I hope that, that, that this facility was totally scrutinized for its compliance with the ADA requirement. As I've mentioned before, there's a real concern with how accessible sidewalks are in this town during the construction process. And there needs to be a way for the city to do a better job of working with the, the people getting permits to reduce the incidence of sidewalk people getting permits to reduce the incidence of sidewalk closures. There should be less, they should have to pay for it. They should have to get permits. They should pay for the inspection. They should pay for the, by the month for how long they keep it closed. Tom Hagen has something on Sixth Street that's been closed for months. The Church of Tenth and Sarsapras has been closed forever, the sidewalks there. This is a real concern. I'm wondering if we're using some of the ARP money to rehab rather than just demolish houses. John Whaley mentioned the quality of life. The quality of life ordinance should also extend to how the actions of businesses, churches, schools, et cetera, affect sidewalk access. It shouldn't be just used to find homeowners for broken windows and tall grass. We need to start making sure that sidewalks are accessible, like 18th Street between Cranberry and Raspberry, and places along Buffalo Road. And during this, and there really needs to be serious enforcement during the wintertime of sidewalk access by commercial landowners, especially along 12th Street, downtown, 38th Street. There's no excuse.
Ma'am, it's five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anymore? Guess not, Lori.
Ordinances for final passage, Council File Number 16249, Official File Ordinance 542021. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, an ordinance of the City of Erie establishing stormwater management fees with the City of Erie. Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16249, and now known as Official File Ordinance 542021, be finally passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys.
No.
Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski.
No.
Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski.
No.
I can't tell if Mr. Keys said yes or no.
Mr. Keys is a no.
Motion fails. Three nays, three ayes, four nays.
Are we allowed to talk after the fact?
Mr. Betts, I don't think so. Long as it's in an orderly fashion. Go ahead, Liz.
I just want to say that I'm really disappointed in this action. Now we're going to have to start all over again with a new council. And I want the public to know two things. One is that we had our first study session on this on June 21st. And it was council that waited to, to have an additional study session in October. We could have answered a lot of the questions. I also think there's a lot of, well, I'm sorry, three things. A lot of misinformation out there. I talked to somebody the other day who asked how much his fee would be, and I said, "Well, at the most, it's going to be, if you have the biggest house, it's going to be $36, $36 a year for five years." He said, "I had no idea." Somehow, it got conflated that this was going to be a huge burden. And the third thing is that American Rescue Plan funding is intended to fund projects that will be sustainable. We had an excellent presentation from Public Works on why this was needed. It's just, it's a disappointment that we didn't do the due diligence between June and October, and now December, to answer the questions and get this approved.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. You had your say. Now I'll have mine. I agree with everything you said except one thing. We were not silent about policy. There's so many, I've said it before, the devil's in the details. And all we asked were, was spell it out. And all we heard was, "Pass it, and then we'll decide how to do it." I guess the council has spoken. We want to know what we're passing. We want to know how it's going to be passed. And I was going to pull it again, but I was told I shouldn't pull it, so I didn't. Now it's gone. I'm sorry about that because I know it's a good project. We have good people coming on. You'll get it passed quickly. Mr. Brennan?
Mr. President, I did want to say that I support the stormwater management fee. I fully understand the benefit. We need to have that, and we need to have everybody pay their fair share. But the two issues I had is the concern that you had mentioned is the approving the fee with no policies in place, the credits, the appeals, the exclusions to support the fee, and also assessing the fee to properties that aren't served by the stormwater system. I did talk to a consultant, and they said they want to pass the fee for everybody because we all get the benefit from it, which is true. But my thought is, if there could be maybe a lesser fee to be, for that, for that connection, for the people that aren't connected to the system but still benefit from it, instead of just having an overall, let's, let's put the fee out there and we'll figure out the kind of the policy separately. So I know that was the question I had the study session. And I know the idea for the public was that we were going to pass the fee to make sure that we don't waste time putting together the policies, and then we're going to, then we're going to, you know, waste that, waste that taxpayer money. But I think the, the important to kind of pass them concurrently, because there's a lot of questions out there. I got some emails saying, "Well, how is this going to work? What are the credits going to look like?" And I think we basically know what the credits could be, but there's a lot of questions out there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Brzezinski.
Just for the record, as I've stated in the past, definitely for storm management. It was the fee end that I don't think we did our due diligence, whether it be the administration or council, to the extent of the fee. And, and what may not seem a lot for some, may be a lot for others. But once again, it can be initiated with the 10.5 million ARP money. Got a plan in place. Let's get the details done. And who knows, maybe with the infrastructure bill that was passed, maybe more money is going to come this way where we may not have to have a fee, and we can still move on and proceed with doing the stormwater management that is definitely needed. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winarski. Anybody else for the good of the order? Ms. Shaw?
I think Liz did a good job of saying what I wanted to say. Other than, I really, I'm random abstract. Abstract, random people don't necessarily need all the details all the time. Just the power that it's going to work.
Thank you. That being said, I guess we're ready to go.
Council File Number 16253, Official File Ordinance Number 582021. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $100,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funding is from a grant from Johns Hopkins University Cities of Service for a Love Your Block two-year initiative. Sponsored by Mrs. Shaw, seconded by Ms. Allen, the Council File Bill Number 16253, and now known as Official File Ordinance 582021, be finally passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 582021 by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16254, Official Ordinance Number 592021. An ordinance amending ordinance number 261958 Traffic Code of the City of Erie by the installation of stop signs at seven intersections. West Fortieth and Myrtle, stopping Myrtle. West Fortieth and Cochran, stopping West Fortieth. West Fortieth and Sarsapras, stopping West Fortieth. West 39th and Cochran, stopping Cochran. Cochran and Parkside Avenue, stopping Cochran. West 41st Street and Myrtle Street, stopping Myrtle. East Fortieth Street and Allen Drive, stopping East Fortieth. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mrs. Shaw, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16254, and now known as Official File Ordinance 592021, be finally passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 592021 by yea seven, nay zero. Council File Number 16255, Official Ordinance Number 602021. An ordinance amending Article 90106 fees by adding subsection C4 to exempt public utilities who have a warranty agreement with the city from paying degradation fees. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mrs. Shaw, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16255, and now known as Official File Ordinance 602021, be finally passed by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 602021 by yea seven, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File Number 16256, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $38,49,418 from Unappropriated and Unanticipated Revenue for the Expenditure thereof. Funding is the Second Tranch American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. Sponsored by Mrs. Shaw, seconded by Ms. Allen, the Council File Ordinance Number 16266, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Council File Ordinance 16256, having been read, is served by adopted on first reading by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16257, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $50,000 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue and Providing for the Expenditure thereof for the Police Drug Advice Program. Sponsored by Mr. Winarski, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16257, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16257 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16258. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $35,113 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the demolition of Coquah Avenue Bridge from the County of Erie from the $5 local use fee fund. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mrs. Shaw, the Council File Ordinance Number 16258, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council.
Before, Lori, before we vote, kind of a clarification from your administration. We had a good bundle of money to knock everything down in our pockets. What, what was the reason for the extra, extra funds here? Did we underestimate the cost that we were going to have? I can understand that. It'd be nice if we knew it, too. I mean, a gentleman came up here and asked a question. We're, you know, $35,000. And once again, where'd it go? You know, if, if the bricks were too big, or the Coquah Bridge was wider than you thought it was, give us the reasons for the extra money. That's all I'm saying. I'm going to vote for it.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the issues are hidden. The same thing happened with Garrison Run. We had the change order. Once they got underground, it started to crumble on further down the line, and more had to be fixed immediately.
And we couldn't get more money from liquid fuels on it?
I'll have to check with engineering to see if they're asking for additional funding.
Too late. We're age-related.
We can be reimbursed.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Watson. Go ahead.
Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16258 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16259, An Ordinance Amending Article 901, Street Escavation Section 90106 to combine the permit and inspection fee into one fee to be paid prior to the issuance of a permit and setting the amount of such fee. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mrs. Shaw, the Council File Ordinance Number 16259, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 16259 by yea seven, nay zero on first reading.
President?
Ms. Winarski?
Motion to move the balance.
We'll have a second.
I'll second it.
Ms. Shaw, second. Okay, any separations? Under number one, a new business.
Any other separations? Motion to move the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Shaw, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brzezinski. Resolved by the City Council of City of Erie that the mayor and the proper city officials prepare and present a balanced 2022 general fund budget without the increase of sewer and refuse fees. Discussion?
I put that on there. Once again, when I initially spoke about it, I talked about the people that are on a fixed income getting hit again with something that they really don't need to get hit by. The other thing I didn't pressure as much on, and I have to do that right now, is we're hurting probably some of the poorest people in the city with these fees. Landlords will accept the fee, but the landlords will not pay the fee. The fee will be passed on to those poor people who are trying to make ends meet, trying to save a little bit of money, so they can find that first house that they all want and would love to have. Instead, we're picking their pockets, in a sense. I, I'm told by Renee that there's no money in the budget. She looked me right in the eye, and she told me, "There's no money in the budget." Let's find out. I speak for the, the poor people, and I speak for the folks on the fixed income who have been holding this city up for years. Throw them a bone for a year, anyway. Let them get on their feet. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
I have some comments.
Go ahead.
For a couple of things. One is, we're getting this resolution on December 1st. We have until December 31st to pass a budget, so a little too late, in my opinion. I went back and I looked at the, you know, I'm going to vote against this. Not because I don't believe in efficiencies, and not because I, or I do believe in doing what Mr. Whaley talked about, working smarter. And just to make sure he knows that I, you said, "Does anybody read, read books?" Yes, just about every day. I'm reading something from, from some site about how cities are doing things smarter and more efficiently. But if you look, one of the things I read is that PFM report that we, the state paid money for us to bring in a consultant. We had a consultant in 2005, and you referenced 2005, and we didn't follow up on hardly any of those recommendations to make Erie be more efficient. But in the PFM report, it points out that what, what we've been doing with the sewer fund and, you know, transferring money. On the refuse fee, I've actually asked, is there a way that we can have people do, kind of go back to the Mario Bagnoni idea, one bag of garbage, you pay less. Mill Creek does it. Now, they have a private hauler. And Public Works mentioned that they thought somebody in the East County is also doing it. So let's give a charge to Public Works to come up with a way, so that if you are generating only a little bit of refuse, you can have a cheaper way to have this stuff picked up. That's innovation. But I think it's too late to be asking for a new budget or a revised budget on December 21st. a new budget or a revised budget on December first. So that's why I'm voting no. It's not because I want to hammer people with fees, but if you look at the history, one good example would be the school district. I went back and I read the old stories about the school district. Just a few years ago, had all these ambitious plans. If you go back and look, I was stunned. I forgot about it. They were going to renovate Roosevelt School. They were going to fix up Strong Vincent. And then the collapse came. You know, a lot of the school district's problems were because of the superintendent not giving an adequate, you know.
Well, you weren't there, Liz. Don't be talking about stuff like that if you don't know what you're talking about. Please.
I, I am making a comparison.
Doing or trying to do.
And you were on the school board, Mr. Brzezinski. This isn't a criticism of you. It's being realistic about the whole stupid cliche of kicking things down the road. The school district was, had to lay off like two hundred and some teachers. They closed schools, but they didn't do long-range planning. We are now doing long-range planning, and we have to stick to the plan. I, I just don't understand why you would say I don't know what I'm talking about, because I just spent hours the other day reading about both the school district and city budgets going back. So I do my homework.
If you read everything, you will have found out that five million a year went away when GE stopped after five years. There were promises made, not written promises unfortunately, that that five hundred, that five million wouldn't disappear the way it did. It did, and the entire school district kind of got caught with their shorts off. That's a terrible thing, but it happened. And over here, we have a pandemic we're dealing with.
The state came in and took over and brought in a supervisor. That's how close the City of Erie was to Act forty-seven. That's why I'm making the comparison.
Okay, thank you. All for the vote, I guess?
Mr. President?
Quick comment here.
Brendan. Yeah, I'm on a kind of a similar ideas as Liz. You know, it is, is kind of last moment, and I do absolutely no, no one wants to raise fees. I mean, even thinking about it is really tiring. But the, we have less and less income coming in. We have more and more costs every year. We see the staff costs go up every year. It's, 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 it's really unending. We need some creative ideas. You know, I wish I had the answers. I wish I had creative ideas, but something has to happen. There needs to be change. I know there's a lot of things that have started, and there's been some change. But, you know, I, yeah, I, I don't know anything I've ever voted for a tax increase on council. I often check the records, but I just, this refuse fees, I, I think it's something that's, it's, it's, I'm going to vote in, in favor of it, only because I just don't know the answer at this point, but we do need to, to change. We need to have some creative ideas. And I, I keep, whenever we talk about the budget, I'm always talking about where, where we get new income, you know, besides just our taxpayers. What can we do? I know it's going to take a long time. We have a lot of industries left us, but a lot of issues coming back. We're trying to support a new industry with some investments in some of these industrial properties. So there's a lot going on, but it's going to take a long time to get there. And I don't have the answers, but I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Let's see, Witherspoon.
Do we have an idea of the cost of the fees?
I could share that if you want, the cost. The, the, on the average consumer for the sewer fee will pay three dollars and thirty cents more per quarter for three months.
The increase, I think without the twelve, twenty-four, or thirty-six dollar stormwater fee, it's probably around forty, forty or fifty dollar a year total increase. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. If we decide to eliminate those increases, I've been told we'll have to eliminate services. So finances, working on, I'm calculating how much it costs us to do large item pickup, electronics recycling events, the tire recycling, and, you know, the possibility of cutting back from weekly recycling to monthly recycling would save us a lot of money. Composting, there are a lot of different services that we provide that will have to be looked at.
Can you hear me? Hello? I can.
Yes.
Okay, I can share with you the exact amount. The, the sewer fee, the average consumer in Erie will pay three dollars and thirty cents more per quarter. So every three months, the fee goes up three dollars and thirty cents. For refuse, the quarterly increase is four dollars and seventy-five cents for the average person in Erie. So that's a total, every three months, they'll pay eight dollars and five cents more. If you multiply that times four, that means they pay thirty-two dollars and twenty cents more for the entire year for those two fees. And if we don't do that, it's going to increase costs. I don't, I don't know if, if we shared this with you earlier. I didn't hear it, but if, if we don't increase these fees this year, over the next three years, the fees are going to have to go up more to cover for, for the short chains that we do this year. It'll actually be more expensive for consumers in Erie over the next three years if we don't do this small increase this year.
All I ask you to do is throw them a bone, Mayor. That's not a lot. You're talking thirty-some bucks? Is that what you're talking?
Thirty-two dollars and twenty cents, yes.
People have been calling you and telling you that it does affect their budgets when they're on a fixed budget.
I've gotten very few calls.
Added to the rent.
But you're saving money over the long term if you do this.
Agree on that, but don't tell me money's not there. There's a four million dollar pot from lost revenue last year that hasn't been touched. As far as last minute, the fire department, and I love them, and we want to help them, they came in last minute last night and told us we needed a pumper and a ladder truck. We could have found that out last February. So this last minute stuff, walk the walk, not the talk.
I am walking the walk. This is not last minute. We proposed this, and you're going to be costing people more over the next three years if you don't pass this.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I hate to interrupt, but as liaison for the fire department, we have been told that they need new fire trucks. I can't remember his name, God bless him, but the fellow that retired before Chief Waco sat down with us and said that he needed new fire trucks back then. And it's always been an issue. It isn't something that just popped up. We need to keep our community safe. And unfortunately, in order to do so, we have the expense of buying new fire trucks, which are very, very, very expensive. And they did say last night that it's going up every week. It's going up every month. And it's going to skyrocket. I drive a two thousand and four car that got me to work today a little later than usual because my husband had to kick off a part that was falling on the ground. And so it wouldn't be dragging around the streets. But anyways, I got here on time. I'm going to be driving it till I can't drive it anymore. And I love Erie, but we do buy a lot of cigarettes. We do buy a lot of beer, and we do spend a lot of time at all the stores that have the skilled games of chance, which are helping our senior citizens, which is wonderful. But gas is going up, food is going up, everything's going up. And so it's what, sixty dollars a year that I'm going to have to, you know, take out of my budget. And I get that we are, you know, some people are on fixed incomes. But, and I do understand we are in a pandemic. But we do need money. We need money to help out our police officers in their living conditions that they have in our city hall. The showers area is absolutely disgusting. And we do need some upgrades in the building. We do need our services, and our services are costly. And I think perhaps the people who can, can try not to buy that case of beer, like, spread it out a little bit. The lottery machines, I mean, you, you know, you go in those places, which I, you know, everybody's playing everything, where we have some money that's going out the door that perhaps we can squeeze in to help get those fire trucks, upgrade a little bit, help the police with their shower situation downstairs. Because if we cut back this year, it's going to be more of a property tax in coming years. And we wanted to hold that off. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Let's, we have digressed widely on this. I am a hundred percent behind the fire department and their needs. That wasn't the point. My point was that they're saying that it's too late to look at the sewer and garbage fees, when it's not too late to look at other things that are bigger. That's all I'm saying. I'm a, chief, you got my vote. There's no problem with that. I'm just saying, let's not forget the people that built this city.
Mr. President? Renee, just so everybody knows, what this increase will generate, how much for the general budget?
I don't know if the mayor has those numbers with him. I don't have those. I think it's a total of a little, a million and a half or something like that.
What was?
One point five million, around there between sewer and refuse total. But the mayor may have the exact numbers.
All right. And we may have gotten them from Paul at one of our budget sessions, and we may not even have gotten that far yet.
No, we did. We, we talked about it the night with Public Works. I just don't have that with me.
Isn't, and I know I keep going back to ARP, isn't there some revenue replacement monies that could possibly, and I, I wish we had five hundred dollar, or five hundred million in ARP money for the way we all want to use it, but.
Actually, most of the revenue replacement is going to have to be used for the, the addition of police if we do go with the twenty-one for the capital, capital improvement fund to be able to do the fire trucks, to be able to do some of the upgrades that Mrs. Shaw was talking about.
And you say the majority, I guess, how much is in that pot?
We're still trying to figure that out.
Okay, I mean, can we, can we figure another mil, one point five million, maybe? I'm just throwing it out there.
You know, we, we increased ref, part-time refuse workers last, they were making eight dollars an hour two years ago. They're now making fifteen dollars an hour. Plus, our tipping fees increased. Like, we have to keep pace with those increases. That's the purpose of, you know, if we did an incremental, a small incremental increase each year, we wouldn't get into a situation like this. But we're looking at thirty-two dollars a year for the average homeowner total increase.
And just for the record, too, I, and I know we had got it in our budget pack, maybe the last time we had a sewer rate increase was possibly twenty sixteen or?
I think in the last eight years, it's been increased twice. I think.
A million out of it every year.
Yeah, and the garbage last time that was increased.
Twenty nineteen, I think.
Thank you.
I, I did find out also the total revenue that this would produce is about one point three million dollars, the sewer and the refuse increases.
Save two hundred thousand. Anything else for you to go to the order? Let's have the vote, Laurie.
Voting on the resolution, Ms. Allen?
No.
Mr. Brennan?
No.
Mr. Keys? Did you hear anything, Frank? I could go on, Mrs. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Winarski? Mr. Witherspoon?
Mr. Keys is a yes. Excuse me.
Brzezinski?
Yes. Got it?
Did you get Mr. Keys? Was it yes? I misspoke.
Motion fails to pass. Eyes three, na four.
Sometimes you swing and miss, folks. I'm sorry. Do we need counsel? I'm sure everybody wants a comment, so we might as well start. Ms. Allen, go ahead. Haphetically, we'll do it.
Okay. I, I still, I want to thank Mr. Whaley again because he does give us food for thought. And I wanted to tell him and the rest of the public that David, Kathy, and Jim was there for part of it. And I attended a Zoom with Bruce Katz of Drexel University's Noah Metro Finance Lab. He's guiding officials in Erie County on long-term recovery strategies and investment opportunities with ARP infrastructure and how to leverage those funds. It was pretty interesting and bold, and it really talked about a mindset that, that we really have to have on innovation. At the November seventeenth City Council meeting, I talked about why I think City Council should create a few standing committees so we can work together more efficiently and smartly. And today, I want to elaborate on why we need to do some rethinking of how we work. I mentioned that David, Kathy, Jim, and I attended the Zoom with Bruce Katz. These council members are leaving at the end of this year. And so we're going to have three new council members coming in, Jasmine Flores, Chuck Nelson, and Mo Troop. When David, Kathy, and Jim leave, we're going to be losing a lot of institutional wisdom. Kathy has served as chair of the Finance Committee, she's the liaison to the Water Authority, the, I think, EMTA, the Bureau of Fire, the Planning Department, and Erie County Human Relations Advisory Committee, among other duties. David's the liaison to the Parking Authority. He's been deeply involved in trying to figure out a new agreement with the Parking Authority. He's the liaison to Public Works, CDBG. He's the first alternate to the Council of Governments and first alternate to the Bayfront Parkway Project. He's on the Historic Preservation Review Commission, but he will become a voting member of that commission when he leaves council. Jim is liaison to the Convention Center Authority, to the Port Authority, and to the Erie Bureau of Police. And I know that incoming council members are eager to hit the ground running, but they also have jobs. So we need to start thinking about how the liaison relationship should work. I mean, who can attend meetings? How do we develop expertise around topics, including economic development, mass transit, the role of independent authorities, and of course, the budget? I, I looked at, I believe the last time we had such a large turnover on council was in two thousand and six. So it's been a long time since we've had, you know, a lot of new blood coming in at the same time. So I think we need to start thinking about how we do our, our jobs, the best way, how we pick up from those who are leaving, what words of wisdom they can give us as they leave, and be prepared. I had advocated for several years that we start the budget process earlier. The administration has given us the budget earlier, but there are other cities I know where they start working on it in September and October. And I think that would help us avoid some of the, the log jams we've hit in two thousand and twenty-one. That's all.
Thank you. And Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just kind of picking up with some of the items that Liz said. And we did talk about committees, committees, structures, and then we talked about it at the beginning. Um, just kind of picking up with some of the items that Liz said, uh, and we did talk about committees, structures, and then we talked about it at the beginning. I do think I would recommend that in the future, you know, having that as a precedent. I know county council does that. So, you know, having committees that would work on issues and come back to council with recommendations. I would strongly, uh, you know, see that for their future councils. That'd be great if you guys to think about that. Um, as for my report, um, we have a historic review commission meeting, a regular meeting is, um, will be on Monday, December sixth at four P M. It'll be a combination in person and virtual meeting. Uh, we'll be continuing discussing on our draft rules of procedure and also discuss a draft of the historic overlay district nomination form. Um, also, I, as Liz mentioned, we did attend the discussion with Bruce Katz, and we thank Bruce for taking the time out of his busy schedule to, to talk to us. Uh, he's working on all the um items, trying to help out the city with the, you know, looking at these ideas for sources of funding, et cetera. Um, you know, some of the items he mentioned were waterfront pass force. Uh, he mentioned some of the things we need to do is the, the coke cleanup, Twelfth Street Quarter, he thought was very important. Neighborhood focuses, um downtown development, entrepreneurship, homelessness, mental illness, um, all these issues. Uh, and then to deal with their issues of different victims and lack of collaboration, a lot of um groups have. So he just mentioned a lot of those. And the last thing I mentioned is uh kind of personally, but he mentioned that uh, other cities have done these international architectural planning competitions. And I've seen this been, been done in Buffalo and St. Louis, so that kind of intrigued me a little bit. There's something that could maybe draw some attention to Erie. Again, just one piece of the, the huge puzzle, different things that he's um, he's kind of looking at and recommending. Uh, and then last, my report is Erie Parking Authority. There's no report. Uh, we, we don't, I, we have, our next meeting is November fourteenth. Um, we continue discussions. I know the municipal agreement is still in, in play. Uh, the, their board approved it, as I reported last time. And it's a, we're, we're reviewing that now, the city administration is. And Chris Friday and I did, the executive director did talk about meeting again to discuss some orders, change ideas. I'm not sure if that's still uh in, in uh, if we're going to be able to meet, uh, you know, within the next couple of weeks. I'm hoping we're able to. And we'll, I'll report back to council any, any discussions. And of course, uh, work with Renee. Renee's been, you know, working on these, on these things for the past, I don't know how many years. So I thank her for all her due diligence and work on this. So, thank you.
Dave, could you make one quick mention to the Hagan thing? You have to be real specific about it, but let folks know what we're doing.
Yeah, a couple of meetings ago, we did pass a, a resolution to honor Mr. Tom Hagan uh for his work in our community and our region. Um, and we are planning on um honoring him with a street designation from Myrtle Street, the Chestnut. And uh, you know, we thought it was something on, uh, a lot of council members and all the members of the community, thought it'd be something to uh maybe do something a little bit special instead of just stick up the green sign there. So uh, we are um working on a design and looking at, um, trying to find some private funding to pay for it. Um, so that we could really honor Mr. Hagan appropriately with something that's appropriate for, for that location. That specifically something custom designed that would really kind of tell a story and be something that we can all be proud of. So.
Thank you, Mr. Brennan. Super. Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Whaley, um, I find you intriguing. I know you ran for mayor, but have you ever ran for um city council? Yeah, okay. Okay, um, thank you. So I am the liaison for the fire and I am so glad that I am, they are very accessible and you can talk to them at any time. And I showed up on Marsh Street yesterday or the day before. And um, it's just nice that they have an open door policy. I uh want to thank Ed Kissel and his institutional knowledge that he so graciously shares. He has so much uh to offer the city in the way of the history of, of our city along the bayfront. And I am the liaison for human relations and the Human Relations Advisory Board. They meet on Tuesdays once a month. Uh, last night I did not attend because um, and that, that, those are virtual because of the pandemic. But uh, we had a study session last night or budget session, so I didn't attend that meeting. And the meeting before the uh advisory board, I did not attend that because we had a study session or a budget session um that Tuesday night as well. But those are around the dinnertime hour, uh, five thirty or six o'clock. I did not attend the EMTA meeting uh last week, the Monday before Thanksgiving, because I was having parent conferences. They meet uh at four thirty, I believe. And um, they are very nice because um you can always call them up and talk to them. They're um very accessible as well. I caught the end of the Water Authority meeting. Once a month on Thursdays at three thirty is their meeting time. And they run a very proactive financial, I mean, yes, they owe money, of course, but um they do a great job. They know what they're doing. I uh things run really smoothly there and the board is very knowledgeable and they ask a lot of questions when needed. And um, it's really uh been interesting to uh listen to their meetings. Uh, Bruce Katz, he comes to Erie December thirteenth through the fifteenth. And I hope, like he had mentioned, that he meets up with us. I'm very grateful to um be able to talk to him like we did. Liz and I went to the food hall yesterday after our budget meeting. And I tasted some very delicious food from the Dominican Republic. Um, it was very delicious. It reminded me of roses. By the cemetery before um they closed. So very delicious food. People were out and about. So we're in December and uh we have the neighborhood, what's that called? Uh, for the homeless people sheltering neighbor, neighbor place? Uh, our neighbor's place. Thank you. So thankful to them since they have opened up. Because again, we're still in a pandemic, so the people who are volunteering, they just don't volunteer until eleven o'clock and call it quits and go home. There's like different shifts. So people are there while the people are sleeping to make sure everything goes safety-wise and everything. So um, we're really fortunate that Erie has so many caring people out there to uh volunteer their services and not just to them, but to the soup kitchen and the missions and all the other people going out of their way to help people. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. On this, Norski? Oh, I'm actually lush, yeah.
Uh, very brief this morning. Uh, no committee reports, but uh as Liz mentioned, uh, we have some uh council people elect in our audience. And as a current councilman, going to another uh, another venue, my phone will definitely be open to you, to you guys for, not for me to, just to help. Give you a little insight if you need it. I'm more than happy and willing to be there. I know uh Chuck has reached out a few times over the years and we've talked. But uh, I believe uh as good as this council is, I believe the next one could be just as good. And uh, I really look forward to you guys doing the job. And uh, like I said, we'll be there. I'm sure any of us would be there that are leaving. If you need anything, just holler. Um, and that's all I got this morning. I said I'd be brief.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm the liaison to the Erie Housing Authority. Uh, they have submitted a draft to HUD for their five-year plan, which I have. And I will basically leave it here if anyone on council wants to review it at any time. I've also been in contact uh with uh AJ, the liaison there. And he keeps me abreast uh almost weekly on what's going on in public works. But because I'm the liaison does not mean that any member of council shouldn't contact. And you have that right and that authority to do so. But please do not hesitate. If you have any questions regarding public works, call AJ directly and he'll support you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Witherspoon. Uh, Mr. Keys still on there? Frank?
Yeah, Mr. Keys is here. Yeah, um, no report. Uh, just just like to say that, you know, um that I agree with everyone that public safety is very, very important. And you know, it's just, you know, it would have been good to get the the needs of our public safety departments out ahead of some of the other concerns when it comes with ARP money. Because we're gonna give the money to the public safety. But if we had to make choices in, in a reverse direction, I think things would, different choices would have been made. So uh uh, well, I'm, you know, a little under the weather and I hope I'll be back in chambers next time.
It will, brother. Thank you, Mr. Keys. I don't have anything right now. Chris? Mr. Betza?
I have nothing.
Oh, that's good. Uh, who's mayor talking or is the other mayor talking? Who's talking?
I was gonna talk.
You're gonna talk?
Yes. Um, so just a few things. Um, first, uh, tomorrow for the um press conference, we'll be announcing the latest uh awards for the flagship fund. We had a, an enormous number of applications this round. Uh, we're excited about the assistance we can provide to small businesses in the form of grants. So we'll be announcing those tomorrow. Uh, because we had so many good applicants, we are going to direct some of them to apply for ARP funding since the funding was uh passed for the Department of Economic and Community Development. Uh, we're in the process of trying to create the application as soon as possible so that we can start taking applications before the end of the year. And convene the project review team after the first of the year to get that funding out as quickly as possible. Second, uh, I want to remind everybody the Downtown Delights is this Friday. Thanks to the Erie Downtown Partnership for all their hard, hard work with all of our community partners and getting the um Perry Square decorated. And in coordinating the event, there are some new aspects of that this year. We'll be talking about that at the press conference as well tomorrow. But the event is Friday night from five to eight P M. Uh, the festivities on the stage will begin around six o'clock with Santa and the mayor lighting the square and the tree. And uh, we will not be, we will be um operating under a kind of a COVID protocol. We'll not be crowding into the Boston store this year, but Santa and Mrs. Claus will be in a heated tent behind the, the, the holiday tree. So um, we're looking forward to, to that. Uh, I just want to say, um, let's see, we also, we also have a study session Tuesday night, um, five thirty with the planning department to talk about uh ARP allocation for um improvements to parks, streetscapes, sidewalks, um, East Bay Front, uh Greenway Trail and implementation of the neighborhood plan that was developed there. Uh, and uh, our Cities of Service, Love Your Block program and the groundwork Erie Trust. And so we'll, we'll be um providing a lot of information for you on Tuesday night about our plans there. Um, the last thing I just wanted to comment on is the stormwater fee. Uh, we were really trying to be proactive and make sure that we were creating uh an equitable fee that would not uh rest on the shoulders of our homeowners, our residents that are so strapped and have been shouldering the burden for years. And that's why that fee was going to go on all property owners based on the square footage of their impervious surface. Homeowners would have paid twelve, twenty-four, or thirty-six dollars a year. The, you know, what we have allocated.
Lose track of the fact that it didn't pass because there was no policy in place.
Right, the, the.
Because it wasn't good.
Right, well, the consultant explained that usually what happens is you get the fee passed and then you work out the credit policy. Um, the, you know, we're, we, we have a need to take care of our infrastructure underground. So, you know, you mentioned Garrison running the change orders. That collapse, which we had to react to instead of being proactive, cost us one point seven million dollars. On the twenty-eight thousand seven hundred households, that cost them fifty-nine dollars a household just for that one project. We're allocating ten point five million in ARP funding to take care of a lot of the high priority issues. But that doesn't take care of the whole city. That's only a fraction. These pipes are, you know, from the eighteen hundreds. So this, this, you know, not passing this does kick the issue down the road. We have to come up with a sustainable funding mechanism to take care of these issues on an ongoing basis to be proactive and to make sure that we don't get into a situation where we have crumbling pipes underground a hundred years from now, after we get all the ones that are crumbling now fixed. This has to be sustainable going forward. We're not going to get seventy-six million dollars dropped in our lap again to, to fix these issues. We have to do it ourselves. So um, hopefully we can continue to look at this and we can move forward. But if we have, if we continue to have to react to crumbling infrastructure underground, it's going to be shouldered entirely by city taxpayers. And if we don't have the funding in the budget, we will have to float bonds, which, which will cost even more in the long run because then we'll be paying interest. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I think that pretty much winds it up. Uh, you folks that feel as strongly as I did about the, those fees, uh, don't forget the mayor wants to hear from you. Keep on calling them because we still have budget sessions. Anything else? Pretty good to your order?
Would you mind if I made a comment?
Say good morning.
City Council adjourned at ten thirty-five A M. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff?
Hang on.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I just wondered if I could just make a quick comment as well. Uh, what I want to say is I respect your decision on the stormwater fee. I understand why you did what you did. Uh, I'm trying to move forward with this now. What I'd like to do is get council the information that you've requested, uh, several of you have requested, and I think that's why for you voted against it, because you don't have that information yet. I want us to start, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Renee or anybody about this, but thinking about what happened, I, I want to move forward. So my goal right now, and I haven't talked to anybody else about this, but what I want to do is uh get the information that you requested, like what would be the fees to, to various organizations and that sort of thing. That means we spend the eighteen thousand dollars to move forward with that. Could be a waste of money if you don't eventually approve it or next year's, this will have to go to next year's council since it requires two votes. Uh, so I, I really, really uh want, want to move forward with this. And I don't know that a, a year is going to make that a big a difference, to be honest, in terms of uh, you know, the, the financial impact of this. Uh, there's other finances we're still trying to learn about and, and understand. So I respect your decision. I, I want to get the information you want to know, which is how much is it going to cost? Uh, individuals, you know how much it costs individuals, but we, we need to know uh nonprofits and for-profit companies that own land and that sort of thing. So I respect your decision. We will work on that and move forward. And one other briefing I wanted to mention is uh, on, on Friday evening, that's going to be a great event that Renee talked about. There's one other part of that event, which is at seven P M. in front of the Warner Theater, where the lights will be turned on in the new Warner Theater, and we'll be participating in, in that as well. Uh, Casey Wells, the Convention Center Authority, of course, did all that work and everything, and we'll be participating in that with them. So thank you for the session today. And I look forward to, to moving forward uh with you guys the rest of this month. And also working with the new council starting next year. Thanks very much. Thanks very much. Have a great day.
Mr. Mayor, before you leave, give us that policy information as quickly as you can. And we can always put it on the 15th and have a second, wait the rules and have a second reading and pass it on the 15th. Stormwater is important. I understand that.
Yeah, thank you.
Like I said in caucus, the horse was pushing the cart. We didn't know what was going on and we, I think we deserve to know that. So if you can get that policy information to us, I think I speak for the council. I think we could make the vote work the right way.
If that's possible, we will do that. Thank you very much.
And keep an eye on the sewer and garbage. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, we also though say that we are having a, we are having a budget meeting after this, right?
Right now, yeah. Five, five minute break.
Right.
Okay.
Five minute break.
All right. Yeah, we're going to take a five minute break after we break here and then we'll have our public hearing on, not a public hearing, our, our study session. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good day.
City Council now adjourn at 10:38 AM. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Keys, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Wodarski?